Under God, Invisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Great job, Ryan. Thank you. Item number three, Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nakada, members of the board, I would like to wish a very happy belated birthday to Mr. Tony Ayub. His special birthday was on December 2nd, so... Happy belated, Mr. Ayub.
Thank you.
I must also add that instead of making this a belated birthday greeting, I'm making sure we're the first, Mr. Ayub, to wish you a happy birthday for next year. So there you go, Mr. Ayub.
Thank you.
Alright, it gives me great pleasure to report that Socorro ISD's very, very own superstar by the name of Khalid, I'm sure some of y'all have heard of him. Actually, the whole...
Who is that, Dr. Espinoza?
Actually, the whole world has heard of him because he has soared to the top of the charts in the music industry in such a short amount of time. Graduated from America's high school here in SISD, Khalid surprised all, all, every single one of Ernesto Serna's students with a visit and a gift for every single student. And he personally gave that gift to each one of them, so that was a wild moment. This young man, he's a superstar, yet he continues to give back to his community. He's a humble individual, and what a great example for our Team SISD students. So if we can give him a round of applause. I'd also like to thank all of the campuses and students who participated in the Superintendent's Holiday Open House. This is always one of my favorite times of year where we see the spirit of Team SISD come alive and with the great performances that we had in those rooms from the different students, different schools, so great job. Also want to take a moment to recognize our awesome PR department and everyone who contributed to decorating the District Service Center. It looks amazing. So, Mr. Escobar, you and your team, hey, great job. It gets better every single year. Let's give the PR department a round of applause. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Enjoy the well-deserved break with your families and friends. Thank you.
Ms. Escobar, who won the door decorating contest?
It was the 94 upstairs, Admin Service.
You want to explain that?
Security.
Security? You want to explain what she's happy about?
Who's in administrative service?
Yeah.
Yeah, who's in administrative service?
For those of you who don't know, in the DSC, all the departments decorate their window and door entrance every year, and the theme is Endless Opportunities in Team SISD. And then, some of the board members this afternoon went around and judged the windows and came up with a winner. And so, that's why Ms. Porego is so excited. But they all, every department did a wonderful job of decorating their windows. We're going to move on now to Board Honors. Mr. Escob-
Good evening, President Nakada, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. First, we will recognize an El Dorado High School student for winning the first-ever Frijol Feast Scholarship Contest by the Gallo Collective, an artist-driven group that generates opportunities for other artists in the city. This student competed against other young artists and presented to more than 100 community members about how art can shape our communities and the world. Her bright ideas earned her a $6,000 scholarship for the college or university of her choice. Congratulations to the student from El Dorado High School, Dina Orozco. She's joined by her teacher, Ms. Candace Prince. Just a quick note that the photo is taken tonight by our district photographer, Mr. Largo. Will be posted on our district website. There's a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner of the page, and the photos are available for free, high-resolution download. Next, we recognize Team SISD students whose work placed in the 2018 El Paso Community College K-12 Salute to the Arts exhibit. The goal of the EPCC art competition is to celebrate the creativity of students in our region. The SISD-winning artists were selected out of more than 1,100 students across the city who entered the contest. Congratulations to the 2018 Salute to Arts contest winners. They are, from Luhan Chavez Elementary, Joshua Lopez. His teacher is Mercedes Zamora. From Socorro Middle School, Ivan Ortega. Is a teacher of Amber Torres. From Enzer Middle School, Eduardo Dominguez. His teacher, Melissa Ariano. Representing the winner from Hernando Middle School, who was Camila Luna, her teacher, Deborah Miller. There's three winners from Desert Wind School. They are Soles Sepulveda. Sofia Montiel. Jessica Vazquez. Their teacher is Karen Perez. From El Dorado High School, Fernanda Vela. Her teacher, Ms. Candace Prince. Also from El Dorado High School, Russell Acosta. And her teacher, Allison Vega. If we'll have you all, please come back forward for your photo. Looking straight ahead. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize the winners of SISD's 2018 Winter Holiday Art Contest. More than 160 students district-wide entered this year's contest. The artwork showcased their creativity and talent with colorful scenes and a nod to SISD's Endless Opportunities. The winners were featured in the Superintendent's Holiday Open House invitation, are on the SISD website and social media sites. In addition, their entries were professionally framed and made into a holiday postcard. Congratulations to these students. They are, from Herschel Antoine School, Sunny Aguilar. From Sierra Vista Elementary School, Giovanna Cordova. From Montwood Middle School, Amber Camacho. Unfortunately, our high school winner was unable to join us, but a round of applause, please, from El Dorado, Tanya Casas. Congratulations once again. For our next recognition, we will recognize an SISD campus for winning the 2018 Superintendent's Holiday Cookie Bake Off. This year's Holiday Open House took on a new twist with Team SISD schools showcasing their talent in the kitchen and competing to be the Cookie Bake Off Champions. The school selected 10 students to decide on a recipe, bake, and decorate their cookies with the theme of Endless Opportunities. Cookies were judged on presentation, originality, creativity, flavor, and overall impression. Congratulations to our talented bakers and winners of the first-ever Superintendent's Holiday Cookie Bake Off. They are from Helen Ball Elementary School. Their team members are Alexis Varela, Alexa Varela. Sebastian Cervantes. Emily Guerrero. Sylvia Andrea Valdez. Amber Sanchez. Danica Juarez. Olivia Navarro. Matthew Rocha. Annette Almanza. Yitzel Montes. And their sponsored teacher is Manuel Ruiz. Congratulations once again. Our final recognition this evening is in honor of the Montwood High School Marching Band who- -who, for the first time in school history, advanced to the UIL Class 6A State Contest. The Montwood Ram Band had an outstanding performance at the regional contest in October with their piece Swan Lake. The group then went on to represent Team SISD as well as all of West Texas at the Alamo Dome in San Antonio, where they performed in front of hundreds of fans and competed amongst the best of the best 6A bands from across the state. Again, members of the audience, congratulations to the Ram Band for this outstanding accomplishment. Joining us tonight from the Ram Band, we have Alaya Avila. Erin Estrada. Adam Schwantner. Adrian Hernandez. Alan Renteria. Alyssa Gentry. Alyssa Herrera. Amber Cardoza. Ariana Peru. Ashley Reyes. Benjamin Puentes. Borahilio Hernandez. Brianna Karanko. Brianna Marcus. Brianna Ortega. Brian Esquivel. Candy Auregui. Carolina Uribali. Catherine Ray. Christopher Ortiz. Daniel Petrón. Daniel Diaz. Dante Jimenez. Daphne Fernandez. David Perez. David Thaeus. Diego Arroyo. Diego Felix. Dominic Navarro. Eduardo Favela. Elijah Mendez. Emiliano Olivas. Emily Felix. Eric Medina. Faith Bashear. Fernando Martinez. Francisco Valenzuela. Garrison Hill. Gavin Gonzalez. George Ponse. Giovanna Hernandez. Gustavo Rubio. Iliana Newman. Isaac Rodriguez. Jackie Hernandez. James Codero. Janine Hager. Genevieve Ivy. Jennifer Federico. Jessica Diaz. Juan Carlos de la Cruz. Julian Diaz. Kaylin Gagnon. Carla Ariano. Cassandra Amidis. Liliana Mendivo. Michaela Ochoa. Mario Rosales. Marco Vargas. Matthew Lindsay. Matthew Olivas. Maximo Valdez. Melanie Estrada. Mia Gonzalez. Modesty Campo. Natalie Avalos. Nathan Ramirez. Osvaldo Aguirre. Raymond Camacho. Raymond Vargas. Ricky Mendez. Ruben Avila. Samantha Ortiz. Sergio Villarreal. Steven Fawn. Suzie Muller. Thomas Salazar. Vianney de la Cruz. Victor Reyes. Victoria Rocha. Vivian Ibarra. Alejandra Theo. Vincent Hermosillo. Our Assistant Color Guard Director, Junior Amaya. As well as Steven Luhan. The Color Guard Director is Omar Smith. Assistant Director of Bands are Roman Lechuga. And Caitlin Colette. And they are led by Director of Bands, Humberto Perez. Congratulations once again to the mighty Ram Band. We're going to take a quick intermission. The band is outside lined up on the stairwell. There was too many of them to accommodate here, so if you want to join us, we're going to take the portrait outside on the stairwell. Not that much?
That was actually a lot. It's only six thirty.
Should I answer that question? Just so you know.
Thanks for joining us tonight, Dr. Espinosa. Where'd our audience go?
That's how you clear a boardroom.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate we appreciate the dedication for y'all being here. Y'all aren't just here for children, you know, for your children, but okay, we're going to move on to item number five. Open Forum. We don't have any speakers tonight, so item number six, District Reports. And at this time, we don't have any district reports either. That's a first since I've been on the board.
And with that, Merry Christmas.
Yes. So item number seven, Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
F2. F2.
Any others?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of F2.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Au. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item F2.
I'm just abstaining.
Motion to approve F2.
Mr. Au, should you be abstaining from item F3 instead of F2?
I thought, well, Ms. Crusay, could you help us here? Isn't F2 the agreement with some consent for clinicals with EPCC?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that was it. No, I think that's it, ma'am.
And so you don't need to abstain from F3?
Is EPCC there?
Yes.
Oh, then, yeah, I need to abstain from F3 also.
But it's the fingerprint scanner.
It's just the fingerprint scanner.
For the attendance that we discussed.
Oh, yeah, that's for the busing.
So we're okay?
Yeah, we're okay.
Okay.
Just F2.
I'm sorry. I have a motion to approve item F2 by Mr. Nakata, a second by Mr. Getta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I abstain. I work for the college.
And the motion carries. And item eight, New Business. A, Consider Approval of Traffic Signal Flashers Agreement with the City of El Paso. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, President Nakata, Dr. Espinosa, members of the board. David Carrasco, I'm here representing Mr. Reinten.
Yes, sir.
In case you have any questions on that item.
Does anyone have questions?
Yes. Is it going to be on Firehouse? It's one light or a couple of lights?
It'd be two lights.
And why are we doing Firehouse?
Okay. Was recently the city had taken away parking on Firehouse Lane.
Yes, sir.
With that, and with the increased traffic running from Montwood trying to cross onto the other side of Joe Battle?
South Flankville, yeah.
Quite a bit of traffic now has increased cutting across to get to Saragossa going south. So it's increased the traffic quite a bit. Also, there's a crosswalk right about halfway in the street. And so a lot of the students, as they get out that on the rear part of Montwood High School, they tend to use that sidewalk by the tennis courts, cross, and then go down that sidewalk to have lunch in those restaurants that are on Saragossa. So it's increased when the city did a study and they're recommending that we add those two flashers.
So that was my other question. The city's already approved the flashers?
Yes, sir.
If we approve them, then we're good to go with them?
Yes, sir, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sorry. Sorry. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Getta, a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carrasco.
Thank you.
Item 8B, Consider Approval of Quality Supply Connecting to Existing Flume at Options High School. Mr. Carrasco.
Yes, good evening. The item came up recently in the Presidencies Committee. And this, there's a business that is on Pine Springs and Southview, right adjacent to Options High School. And that gentleman is hoping to build a slight retainer wall and a concrete flume to pretty much connect to the one that runs alongside on Options High School. And Ms. Reint has really handled this, and I think there's some information that's been provided to you as well. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer or ask.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Au, a second by Mr. Getta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carrasco.
Thank you.
Item 8C, Consider Approval of Tasby Update 111 and Local Policy. Ms. Macias?
Yes, President Nakata, Dr. Espinosa, members of the board. Administration recommends the approval of Tasby Update 111, BBD, EL, FEA, CAA, CJA, DHE, DI, and Local Policies DEC and DED as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Ms. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Getta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Merry Christmas.
Now without looking, Ms. Macias, can you repeat them?
No.
I was just kind of impressed at the list of them.
Executive Session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss personnel and real estate matters, to consider administrative recommendations for principal and assistant principal positions at various campuses under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. And we are in executive. The time is 6:40.
The movie was good. You guys missed it.
Creed 2.
Okay, we are back in session. The time is 8:18. Item 10A, Consider Approval of Administrative Recommendations. Dr. Espinosa, we have Principal at Hernando Middle School.
Yes, President Nakata, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Valerie Harrison to assume the roles and the responsibilities as the Principal at Hernando Middle.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Mr. Getta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 1A1B, Purple Heart Elementary.
Yes, President Nakata, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Deanna White to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the Principal of Purple Heart Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Au and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. To Assistant Principals, A, Desert Wind School.
Yes, President Nakata, members of the board. Administration recommends Mr. Ben Melendez to assume all the roles and responsibilities as Assistant Principal at Desert Wind.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Au and a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. This is really not part of our
She meant relevant discussion, Mr. Gandara.
A discussion about Desert Wind.
Yeah.
Assistant Principal. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
I'm opposed to Mr. Gandara.
Assistant Principal for Montwood High, hey, excuse me. Assistant Principal for Montwood High School.
Yes, President Nakata, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Yolanda Solis to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the new Assistant Principal of Montwood High School.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Mr. Getta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 8:21. Thank you.